Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As the slide says, I'll be introducing some updates to the chapters to code that I'm responsible for. First, we'll go over an outline. That's going to outline the reason for the updates. Updates that are common to all chapters, then updates particular to each individual chapter, 10, 12, and 14, and then actions to be taken following the presentation. Most of these changes to codes were done through the restructuring of the chapters to attempt to line all three of them up so that they have some type of an order and better flow as you read the chapters. So several reasons for some of the updates. First was the revision of the bulk program. If you recall, a year or so ago, we revised the bulk collection from twice a month to once a month. Staff had discussed at that time that we'd be looking at making appropriate changes to the code, and that's what we've done during this process. The second reason is the creation of the pre-treatment ordinance. If you recall, back in March, I brought forward the pre-treatment ordinance that came out of the sewer ordinance, Sewer Code 12. We now have 12A. That precipitated a lot of changes within the codes. So that was one of the reasons that started it. We went after some clarification for application procedures. So as people looking for creating common language between the codes, provide a more clear position on security deposits, including the return of deposits based on certain criteria like a payment history. So we've added some customer service elements to these codes as well. Fourth was clarification on some enforcement processes. We strengthened the language in all three for clarity and provide for a dismissal of fines for not signing up for service if the resident could provide that they've signed up or have some kind of arrangement for payment. We also established administrative warrant process for inspections to ensure compliance with the code. And now we're requiring that property owners advise the city of names of the tenant occupying the property. And this is because due to state statute, we can no longer go after the landlord if the tenants don't pay. So now we can go after the tenants.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Within the area of sanitation itself, in the application, it asks for, you just stated the names, are you asking for every person in that household?
No, ma'am. We're asking for the person responsible to make the payment.
Okay. But within reading over the items, and you know what? I'll let you finish, and I'll go find it within my notes, and I'll point out where I saw where it was.
Thank you.
And ask you about that.
I would like to stop and interject. I thought some of these changes were really good. They really did clean it up and made it more understandable for the public. So there is no question about what our process is, what the fine will be, when it'll happen, all of that. And so I was surprised that it was so cloudy. You know, I hadn't read those in a long, long time. But I thought, as I was reading through it, that it was a good direction to go.
Thank you. A lot of work that went into it. So we'll go on, and then we'll answer the questions as we get to them. Last thing, of course, was just overall uniformity and just attempting to standardize the section numbering. So if we have Section 1 as definitions, it's 1 through all the chapters. Next slide, we'll talk about some of the updates common to all the chapters. So as we go through this, we're talking about all three chapters at the same time. First and foremost was definitions. Under the old context, the definitions were woven all throughout the ordinances. What staff did is they went through and they pulled those definitions into one common section. So as you open up the chapter, you'll see all the definitions, and then as you read the chapter, you'll understand what the definitions are. That's typical in most code performances.
Question, I'm sorry, on the definitions. Just, I'm assuming this is just the way that you typed it. When I look at the strike-throughs, and you typed in blue the new, you know, definitions that you're going through, they're all in capital letters for the whole thing. I'm assuming that's just, you did it that way to stand out, not that that's how it's going to be, because it doesn't flow correctly. You know, like if you had "city," you had it in all caps, and then you defined it in lowercase, you know, normal font. But within the areas that you changed, everything's in all caps. And so it just all runs together. I'm assuming you're going to stick with the same normal format that you always had.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Yes, that's how you'd show it when you're showing a revised code.
You show it in all caps.
Yeah, you show the strike-throughs for the deleted sections. Your amendments or your amended texts, you usually show in all caps.
Okay. Well, I see it in the blue, but since it was all caps, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So Mayor, are we going to ask questions?
Yes, yes.
I have two questions, please. On the page where you're talking about the service termination, and you said that you've taken out the delinquent access notice fee?
This is page 14.
Page 14 or 29?
Thank you very much.
In the middle?
And is that, is that Chapter 10?
Yes, 10. Billing payments, additional fees, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, it says that the administrative penalty fee will be set by resolution of council. So when are we going to do a resolution to set the penalty fee? Because it says, you're striking out a fee of 1.5 percent of the unpaid balance of any account which is not paid timely as required will be imposed on all delinquent accounts. And...
Separation, so that's Section B?
It's right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it right here?
Mm-hmm.
So I missed a council meeting, or have we set the resolution fee? Is that something else that's going to come back to us, maybe? You think?
I believe there's already, there's already a fee in place, if I'm not mistaken. I'm going to turn to...
This is just cleaning up the language. Did we pass it?
I don't know. Is this the stuff we did with Gary, way back?
Was this way back when?
I'm going to ask Sanitation Superintendent Willie Elizondo to help out.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, we did move the 1.5 percent in a different part of the chapter to make it more consistent with the remaining other chapters. The 1.5 is still in there, it's just it didn't flow with...
It's in a different spot.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I understand that, but then you said the administrative penalty fee set by the resolution of council, is that the resolution that we did, the 1.5?
I believe so.
Okay.
Why don't you come forth?
All right.
What, I'm sorry, what was that?
He's, John Guio.
John Guio.
Yeah. John, would you kind of give the explanation, please?
Currently, the fee is 1.5 percent when someone's late on their sanitation count.
We can't hear. So you speak into a microphone, please.
1.5 percent is the late fee that we currently charge on all our utility account.
We have been charging it for some time. That's nothing new.
If we were to change it at a later date, we would do it through resolution.
But if we change the figure you put in there, or this figure you're going to have to do a resolution on?
We would have to do a resolution on, to change the 1.5 percent.
We're not changing anything.
But you're not changing the 1.5. All right, let's get that straight. So the 1.5 percent stays from the previous time that we did resolutions, and that probably was when Gary was here.
Yes, I think it was when Gary was here.
It's been a while.
Yes, ma'am. So it's more of a, it was struck out in this section, moved to another section, but the 1.5 percent stays. The council's already done a resolution. If we change that percentage to 2 percent, we'll have to bring that back for council resolution.
Okay. I was just reading it, that it's going to be a penalty fee that's going to be...
And will be assessed.
Will be assessed by the council. That's how I was reading this.
Well, that's what it says.
Well, that's what I thought. Okay. Well, okay, my next question, and this one's real simple, is that whenever someone applies to become a, let's see, commercial and multifamily residential, and you're asking for a federal taxpayer ID number, which I understand, but you're also asking for social security numbers? Folks...
What page, what page is that?
This is page 12 of 29, number 2. It used to say C2, and the C has been stricken. And it's 2B. And you're asking for the taxpayer ID number, which I understand, that's from a commercial company, and you want folks' social security numbers.
And/or, and/or.
Well, but if it's a multifamily, they're not going to necessarily know what a federal tax ID number is. But a social security number, is it still okay for us to ask that?
Yes. And the reason is to be able to know who the owner of the development, they're the multifamily unit.
Talking about apartment complexes.
Okay.
It's kind of putting the responsibility back on the people that are deciding the government.
Oh, sure. I understand it. It's just, you know, with so much that we, you and I do, and they no longer let us use our social security numbers. So that's why I was asking, is it okay for us to ask that?
I believe it is.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question? Thank you. Moving on. As far as, again, we talked about the definitions, the application deposit billing process. We made all the applications and all the codes consistent, provided new language for return of security deposits, which is expansion of our customer service element. And the new language identifies only one activation fee required for three utilities. So instead of paying a separate fee for each utility, you pay one as you sign up. We've added some language for discontinuance or termination, which basically strengthened the language, which clarified our position. Examples of the clarified language, we request for discontinuous must now be in writing, and a change of address must be provided so that we can keep in communication with those folks.
You know, I think we learned all this during the downturn when we had so many people moving in and out. There was, we had such a high collection rate that was unpaid.
And that's one of the purposes of changing the code, in order to be able to stay on top of that. Last bullet on that page would be talking about violations, and we added additional violations for failing to sign up for service, which goes along with that very thought. And then additional tampering provisions and escalated fine for repeat offenders. Those are added to the provisions as well. Additional updates common to all chapters. We now have, provided clear direction on how appeals are followed. They were modified for consistency across all three chapters. Enforcement liens revised to include enforcement authority and penalties and fines for violations. Civil violations are now tiered on a first, second, and third time. So we have a clear definition there. Civil violations are now tied to Section 12-2-1, which is basically the service connection requirement. And lastly, current process and responsibilities, we modified the chapters again for consistency. It defines, for example, where the city is responsible up to, including like on the water side, up to the meter, and where the customer is responsible from the meter to the house. Those were clarifications that were made in this chapter. Move on to specific updates for health and sanitation, Chapter 10. We changed the container deposit language to now call it a security deposit, and it provides for the return of the security deposit. It's additional language. And secondly, we created a procedure and a process for court orders, which allows us to enter the property to collect containers. These containers are the property of the City of Goodyear. Typically, they'll be behind a wall, or they'll be in a garage, and if somebody moves out, we don't, we have no legal right to go onto that property. We now do through this ordinance and code change. Updates to the Chapter 12 sewers. One of the largest changes was the fact that we pulled all the pre-treatment language that we had in that chapter, created 12A, and that was adopted by council in April. We added some language for recreational vehicle dumping that adds, now creates to allow RV parks to discharge into the sanitary sewer, where it wasn't allowed before. And then talking about effluent, we modified provisions regarding the effluent to be consistent with council direction. Key change in that is the city may provide rather than intends to provide. That's a key language change from the effluent section of the sewer code. Major change to the water system, along with all the other changes that have been mentioned before, is we modified the section to be consistent with the plumbing code adopted by the city for backflow. And Article 1411 now clearly defines the backflow program. Oops. Can't see the previous slide.
I think you missed one.
I hit the button too far. Update to the codes and actions. Those are predominantly the changes that were made. We'll be asking council, following your return in August, to adopt resolutions declaring Chapters 10, Health and Sanitation, Chapters 12, Sewer, Chapter 14, Water, as public record, and then adopting Chapters 10, 12, and 14 to the City of Goodyear code as updated. And with that, entertain any questions?
Questions?
I do, but I'm looking for them, so if somebody else has...
All right. Molly, do you have some?
No, I'm done. Thank you. Those are mine. Good job.
General question, does this kind of take care of most of your changes you're going to have to the code coming for us? This is kind of a cleanup, is what we're looking at, right?
It was basically cleanup, and again, the genesis was the removal of the pre-treatment code, and then we saw how the codes really needed to be cleaned up and move forward. We don't see any major changes coming forward over the next year or two, so we think we've nailed it pretty good. I want to tip my hat to the legal team that helped out, and all staff that worked on this diligently over the last year. Did a great job pulling this together.
One more quick question. On sanitation, are we having any issues with people not cutting larger pieces that you're having to pick up or getting that message out, as far as what size has to be up there for pickup? How's that coming out there in the city?
We're seeing the improvements from when we first started off with the program to where the majority of the residents are complying with being down to the four-foot lengths, and more understanding than when originally when we put out the program. They understood why we're putting it at a four-foot length.
Okay. So you're getting more compliance on there. That's great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cheryling?
I just, when I was going through it, I noticed that you can have your bulk pickup out for seven days, and that is to be in the street, is it not?
Correct. Street or the alley, right? Depending on...
Street or the alley, but particularly because I don't think people understand that. And I don't know, so if you're doing any advertising or promotion or whatever of the bulk pickup, emphasizing or bolding that, because most people leave it on the sidewalk.
Oh, really?
Well, where I walk, they do.
You have sidewalks, but you have sidewalks in front of your house. That makes a difference. See, none of us...
Yes.
We don't. We don't. See, we don't have sidewalks.
So they don't...
It's a street, not the sidewalk.
And I think they think they're supposed to do that. I mean, I think they're well-intentioned, but of course, that prevents people who need to use the sidewalk from progressing any further, because much of the stuff I can't move.
You know, may influence the dragger. Maybe that's, you know...
So I, that was my thought. I mean, I appreciate that it's supposed to be in the street, neatly stacked in the street, but I don't think that's the understanding.
And that's one of the components of our education program that we're looking at, and that's one of the areas that we're focusing on, making sure it stays on the street edge, where the curb meets the street.
Well, I just was going to let you know, I don't, I really think that needs to be a special punch on that.
We put ours on our rock half in the street, you know, because we don't have a curb.
Right.
And we don't have a sidewalk. And if we pile it in the street, I'm on a corner, people whipping around, take it with them. So we have it partly in our yard.
Your home site's at an angle.
Yeah. But they do a wonderful job, and they're very careful.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Council?
Okay. Well, thank you. Very thorough, and I'm sure this did take a while, so I appreciate all that time. So since I'm already in the water section, on page 13, I just wanted clarification. So if someone wants to discontinue their water, it says it must be done in writing.
Correct.
So we don't have the ability for someone to call and say, hey, I'm moving, I'd like to stop service, or they can't do it online? We don't have that ability? This is saying it has to be done in writing?
That's a good question. I'm going to turn to John Guio again, because he oversees the billing portion of this.
They can't submit that online, or they can come into the office and submit that. So we like to have that hard record, because there has been instances where a neighbor has called and cut off the service, and they didn't want the service cut off. So that's why we...
But at least we can do it online, though.
Yes, definitely do it online.
All right.
And I think we've been surprised by some separations of people who have separated, and then all of a sudden, the person living in the domicile has no water.
But you know, maybe that, well, I mean, this is the ordinance, but I wonder if maybe we should say that that is the option, is online, you know, you may do this in the office or, you know, we're not really stating that that's, you know, available necessarily, you know? So that was one, and then...
Can I comment to yours, if you don't mind?
Yep.
Is there any possibility that there could be a form with the new website? Or can it be put on the web?
Are we doing that?
There currently is a form on the website to stop the service.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay. So, but just within here, it doesn't say that that's an option, so maybe that is an option.
Yeah. I'd say the phone call.
Right.
The code, Councilman Osborne, the code was looking at the high level, just making sure that we have a written document if somebody canceled, so that we can track them and collect payment if any is due, or return a deposit if that fits out. It's more of just trying to keep it so that we have a written document, so we can keep track of who's coming in and out at the high levels.
Okay. There is one typo, I believe, on page 14, Section B. The way it reads, it sounds like it said, say, sentence three utility fees and charges, not charged. I just thought I'd give that to you. Now, explain to me, because there was confusion, I know, with a citizen a few months ago, where they didn't think they were getting their security deposit back. If they have satisfied their bill, there's no reason why we'll hold on to their security deposit, correct? If they're moving out of the home. Is there a timely, timeliness as to when they should receive that deposit back?
The way the current process works is whatever balance they have on their account...
Right.
...the deposit is then applied to that balance. Now, if there's an overage, we would send out a refund check to the address they put on the stop service request.
Okay.
And then if there's anything over that that they need to pay, we would send them a final bill.
Okay. And I appreciate these questions, because, you know, that just makes things come to your mind that you want to ask about, that maybe not, is not necessarily to this document, but, you know, it's circumstances that we see, so I'm asking. That's it on the water section. Really, on the sanitation section, okay, so under your definitions, you've got recycling. And there again, I know you just said that this was at a higher level, but when you say recyclable materials, you give kind of a listing of items. I've had many people that are surprised that our city recycles glass, and you don't have glass within that section of the definition. This may sound anal, but could you put glass within that section?
That's a good idea.
Okay. And lastly, I think, okay...
Is there a reason we kept glass out of that?
Because right underneath it, it says glass under...
Oversight.
Okay.
We will add glass into that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
We will, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we will add glass into that.
All right.
Okay. Two last questions. All right. So this is me not liking the government, when...
Excuse me?
When, this is where I feel like Big Brother is watching type of feeling, you know? Back to my original question, so when someone's filling out an application for sanitation, and it says you are supposed to write down all occupants of that residence, why?
The reason we require that is because what will happen is, if we just sign up Jane Doe, she lets her account go delinquent, and we close the account for non-payment, then John Doe comes in and signs up again. So we have to make everyone that's responsible on the lease responsible for the utility count as well.
I guess what I'm thinking is that it's...
We're not asking for family members, sons, and daughters.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking of my little kids, you know, because it just says residence. So you're thinking mom's got to put down everybody. That's what I'm asking.
The assumption is it's the one who will be paying the bill, will be the one who would be responsible.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a child, it would be a person that...
Not mom, not mom, son. It'd be mom if mom's alone.
Right.
But it won't be son, daughter.
I think it's just the way you read it.
It might be the way it's...
It makes it sound like you want, you know, Orielle the dog, too. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me. Okay. And the last, the last thing is, reading through this, you know, we've had many circumstances, especially through the recession, where they were unusual circumstances that financially someone was in a real bind. And they've come to us, and they said, hey, you know, Grandma Jane passed away, I have her house, and I can't sell it at the time, you know, we've got the water on to keep the landscaping going, but I don't need that trash can. And, you know, it's probably going to be sitting there empty for the next nine months while we close out the state, whatever. Is there the possibility, those common sense type of situations, where this person's just in a bind? And it's, you know, what do we do for things like that? Or are we so, I'm just asking?
Well, as you answer that question, I would like you to give some circumstances of people who have, I can understand Joanne's question, but that have offended that, or what happens?
Oh, yeah, we know there's abuse, but is there times when...
I'd like to hear the abuse as well as the other, because, you know, out of abuse comes rules. You know, people don't play the game right, so then we start another rule. And I understand that, but its bottom line for us as a city is to be responsible for all of our citizens financially, as being physically responsible.
Sure, sure.
So when they set these up...
But that's what I'm asking, the process.
We shouldn't have your neighbor or another citizen, in the end, be paying something that clears, you know, that causes problems, that is financially...
Councilmember Osborne, we do have a provision in ordinance already for that, situations like that, where it's financial hardship, or even our customers that are being deployed.
Okay.
They, what they do is they apply for temporary suspension of service.
Okay.
And explain, you know, what's going on, and staff evaluates that, and grants it for about six months.
Okay.
Before the six months, we let them know that they need to reapply if they see it's going to be a little extended, more than six months.
Well, and, you know, I know we got put in that situation, because we had half of the people out there putting out their trash cans that didn't sign up, you know, and I know that's why we had to get, you know, a little strict on this situation. But we know that there's also situations where it's just, you know, something they can't, they can't handle. And I'm not, it's not on the water, it's back to really more on the trash can side, you know? I mean, that's a smaller bit, but...
We have found some residents that have asked for the temporary suspension, asking for a break from the city on the bill, and we've found that they've been putting bulk out.
Yeah. And see, and that's, they messed us up, you know? We had to get strict on that. So I respect that. I was just, I'm glad to hear that there is a process where if there is some kind of circumstance like deployment or something, that there is an avenue.
I think that was probably some time ago on the vet.
Correct.
It was a few years back, wasn't it? It seems to me, yeah. So that's been in there for some time. But again, maybe it's, well, of course, you don't want to really emphasize it.
Well, and Council, you may have seen it as a blue letter, bolded letter, and prompted your question. It's really language that's there, just maybe moved around to a different section, so that it's identified as a change to the ordinance. It may have come from one section and moved to another. It's been in there.
I'm just, you know, looking for the process, so. That was it. Thank you.
Great. With that, I'm done.
Good. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Enjoy your break.
Oh, that's very nice. Oh, that's very nice. You're not quite there yet, but we are going to.
We're as anxious as you are.
And then the second item is an update on enterprise resource planning as it relates to the progress made thus far in the vendor selection process, project, change management's consulting selection, and future steps. Lynette Reed, Deputy City Manager, and Dan Cotterman, I T S Director, should present.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Dan and I are excited to be here because we have a great story to tell about a process that we've been working on. It goes back to September, and the involvement of employees throughout the city, and where we're at today. And what we hope to do on August 18th is bring back a contract for your approval for a new E R P system and a third-party project manager. But we wanted to take this time tonight to just kind of discuss what we've done, answer any questions you might have, because we know you're going to be thinking about this over the break. You know, I'm waiting for this contract to come back, because we're going to be thinking about it.
I've been losing sleep.
You've been losing sleep, yes. So have I. Okay. The agenda tonight is a little bit of a review. There's a current environment challenges that we did discuss back in December when we last presented to you, but we wanted to bring those up and kind of refresh our memories on that. Talk about the improvement path that we decided on at that meeting in December. And then next, we're going to spend significant amount of time on the project task and work performed to date. Talk about people, processes, and technology, and then timeline and budget estimates and next steps. Dan and I are both pretty flexible, so feel free to ask questions as we go through this. We'd be happy to answer them as they come up. I'd like to introduce, many of them are sitting behind us, but we have an executive selection committee that has been part of this process, and the names and titles are listed up there. And while these individuals are the actual scoring group, as we discuss the process, it will become apparent quickly that we weren't the only ones evaluating this system. We had around 96 employees involved continuously throughout this process. And so, it has been a very collaborative involved process. So, while these individuals did the ultimate scoring, we did receive feedback from a lot of subject matter experts throughout the city.
This next slide is a bit of a reminder for you. Back in the fall, we, with the help of consultants, identified 12 challenge areas, areas for improvement in our current environment. And I'm not going to read all of these for you tonight, but I do want to highlight three of them that I think speak to the root cause of the issues that we're dealing with and that we want to address with our new environment. The first one, multiple city departments are using manual processes to track information outside of the H T E system. The second one, there's limited integration among city systems. And then number nine, the city has numerous third-party applications outside of H T E. And I think those three are all very related and speak to the issues that we're trying to address. And when we're looking to the new system, we kept these in mind, as well as an eye on the future and what those needs are going to be. And then, as we'll probably mention later, we had over 4,000 functional and technical requirements that were included as we looked at the software.
Just a general...
Yes, Joe?
General observation on the 12 that you have here. One thing that strikes accord with me, and as a former user, I think is also very important, is the ability to query and getting data out. It's tough to try to get the information, and we know some of the things we're chasing with payroll, is to be able, you know, get this correct data out in a reasonable and inaccurate manner. So, if there's a fourth one, I'd like to add that one to me, because that's critical. I mean, the system's no good unless you pull the data out. That's of value to you and reliable, so.
Thank you. I completely agree. And I'll speak later to the challenges of disparate systems that aren't integrated and trying to get those quality reports out.
Okay. This, again, this we reviewed back in December, and it was the improvement path that we agreed we would take as part of the selection and improvement process. And I'm just going to read it, and this is what we have followed as we've gone through this process, is to select and implement an integrated E R P system. An integrated E R P is a key word there, through a structured and competitive procurement process while considering point solutions where beneficial to the city. So, that is sometimes in conflict, and sometimes, you know, as we looked at this, obviously, an integrated system that would involve as many processes that we can incorporate into that while reducing the point solutions. But there are times when we will have to ask ourselves as an organization, you know, what are the benefits of going to an integrated E R P system? Where do we find benefits with a point solution? It won't totally eliminate all point solutions, all of them. And we'll discuss that more. Dan will go into more detail on that. It has been some very interesting discussions throughout the last several months, just around this improvement path and how we're going to approach that. So, go back through everything that we have done to date. And back in September, it seems like a long time ago, but September 2013 is when we did our kickoff. Barry Dunn was the company that we hired to help us with this process, and we did a kickoff meeting. But before that, we had them come in and review all of our existing documentation, anything that we had out there that we could provide to them about our processes and systems. And then we also did a web-based survey. In this survey, there were two surveys that were sent out. One survey went to the identified subject matter experts. These are the individuals that really use the system in some way. They're in it for much of what they do, or they're using manual systems to help support what, to get their work done. And then we also sent out a survey to what we called the casual users. Those are the individuals that may not use or get, you know, be exposed to the system, or some of the processes on a daily basis, but may be impacted by some of those. They receive paychecks, or they're doing time sheets, or things like that, kind of at that level. And so, they took that survey data in, and that was Barry Dunn. And so, we sent this out to all city employees. We had subject matter experts did one survey, and casual users did another. And along with the documentation was the initial approach to gathering information by Barry Dunn. The next step was a kickoff meeting in October, and that's where we invited all of those 96 plus or minus employees, subject matter experts. And these are employees from all over the organization. It's in finance, and H R, and development services, and public works. They're all over the organization, I T. And we did a kickoff meeting and kind of explained their role in this process, expectations, and what this would look like. We also held fact-finding meetings at that same time, and that was over three days, that we visited, or Barry Dunn visited, with all of those subject matter experts. So, they had sessions on accounts payable and receivable. They had sessions on payroll. They had sessions on H R. They had session on code and inspections. They had multiple sessions where they sat down with employees and really got to know better what they're currently doing on a day-to-day basis. And that was our fact-finding meetings with employees. After that, in November, they took all of this information back, and they developed a requirements analysis and business case development, which we talked about with you in December a little bit, and also produced an R F I out to the vendor community. The R F I gave us an opportunity to kind of find out what systems were out there. They gave us ranges, so as we went, moved forward, we'd have a pretty good idea what we could afford, what we were looking at, because we haven't done this in about 20 years. I was asking...
Things are different.
20 years. So, as we look at this system, we're not just planning for today or in the next five years, we're planning for the next 20 years. And so, it was necessary for us to kind of get an idea of what's out in the market and what we're looking at.
May I have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Molly?
Do most municipalities keep a computer system for 20 years, seriously? I mean...
I think that's hard to say what the average is, but clearly, that's a long period of time for any software application.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's going to be out of date within six months after we start, but, I mean, it'll really be out of date after a couple of two, three, four years. So, I'm assuming we're being so proactive that we'll never be like we were. We've learned from that lesson of not moving forward as technology changed.
Correct. Yeah, I think we waited...
Well, we have, when I came on board, that's when the interest was that they realized that there was, it wasn't because I came on board, but the conversation, you know that.
No, you did it, Mayor.
The conversation was, is that we were really behind.
Oh, yeah.
And that systems were breaking down and not working, and couldn't communicate with each other. So, it's been, there was so much lacking that it's taken such time to finally get to this point. So...
They're doing such a wonderful job, and they're looking so far ahead, but I honestly don't want to have this same computer system in 20 years.
If I may...
If we can help it.
So, one of the challenges with the current system is that that system quit getting upgraded at some point.
I bet.
And the vendor moved to a different platform.
I think that there weren't any things to upgrade it with, right?
Correct.
I think that was the problem. They couldn't get the parts.
But one of our looking to the future goals is to find a system that would evolve constantly with the times and continue to incorporate new technologies into the system so that we never find ourselves in the situation we're in today. So, we could conceivably have the system for the next 20 years, understanding that it will be evolving constantly.
And it needs to be fluid in the sense that, I mean, you're finding these forms, for example, that you can now have software for to put it within the system. But then you have systems where, a great example was Fleet this morning when we were out there, and they have part systems that someone put together, that's, you know, a private vendor out there type of thing. But they're the experts in that field of parts. We're not. And so, you want it to be able to work with our system, correct? I mean, that's kind of, am I on the right track there? That's part of it?
I'm not familiar with that specific example you're talking about, but yes, the goal is to have a system that can meet all of those types of needs.
Okay. Well, that's just what they were telling me about this morning, about Fleet.
So, we, those are those third-party or systems out there, those point solutions that we have. And there's a great mind map that Christian Williams and Dan put together that really shows that, that's coming up. And one of the challenges with an integrated E R P system is you want it to, that's what you want to use, and minimize the number of point solutions. But the ones that we do need, we need to make sure there's an integration with those. Yeah. So, we, part of this is to reduce the number of point solutions that we have, but we're going to have to make those decisions as we move forward, because every point solution that we have, we have to keep upgraded, too.
Sure.
The behavior back there.
I think there are, somebody wasn't paying attention. The other thing I do want to say for the public is that we were growing so rapidly. There was a lot of growth in Goodyear in the last number of years, so I think it just got, I think we just grew too fast for them, the people that were handling it at that time, to do it, so.
So, in December, we're up to December 2013, Barry Dunn was here. We did a presentation to council, kind of updated everybody as to where we're at. I don't think there was any surprises as to that information that we provided you. And then we developed the R F P after that. And then in January, we did the joint requirements planning work session. This was three days where we spent with those subject matter experts again, and that's where we were going over, and I always want to look at this, 4,625 functional and technical requirements. So, we went through each technical requirement. What does it take to cut a check? And then, is this process a desired, or is it required? And each employee in those groups got to voice their opinions. No, this is a required in the new system. This is what we want. And it was, I sat in on those three days, and what surprised me most were employees were saying, you mean, we can really get that in a system? I said, no, that's standard. You know, that's what you should have in a system. And they were so excited to see that a lot of what they were doing that was manual could be now automated, and that it was standard in systems. So, we did spend three days, though, with the subject matter experts, going through that process with them and identifying their requirements. Then, we did issue the R F P after that, so we were pretty clear as to what we wanted in the new system. And then March through June, it was a busy time, because once we did some initial scoring and identified the vendors we wanted to invite back in, we did invite those vendors in for vendor demos. The scoring team sat through a week and a half of demos. But the subject matter experts were also brought back in for their sections, so they could see the demos of the vendors, what that would look like, how it would respond, how they would use it. So, they were in and out over that week and a half. And then we brought one vendor back for hands-on second demo, which we were up in the training room in I T. Employees got to, in some of the modules, hands-on, others, they were able to ask a lot more detailed questions, really dive into the software and get their answers. And so, after the second round of demonstrations, the scoring committee decided to move forward with reference checks. And at this time, because we're not through with some of the contract negotiations, I can't provide the name of the vendor at this point. We will in August. But this is a tier one, that software system, which there are different tiers, this is the top tier that you can get in software systems for financials, H R. And they have a new module in development services that we will be bringing in also. So...
Joya?
Will this data also help feed towards the priority-based budgeting and being able to, or is that already enough in play? This is just going with it?
That's, right now, in its own kind of tool, and I understand they're moving to a web-based. So, this system is a very powerful system with dashboards and other things on there. So, I think the priority base will probably still be in that web tool there.
Molly?
Are you going to encompass all of finance that does our billing and our payroll? I mean, everything?
Yes.
That's great.
In one system.
In one system. That's amazing. That's going to be exciting.
So, we have spent a significant amount of time doing reference checks. Christian Williams spent a lot of time on the phone, calling other organizations who have this software. We even had the executive scoring committee reach out and do peer-to-peer calls. So, Larry was able to call, you know, other peers who, you know, did this. Lyman did that, you know, reach out to their peers and say, give me the good, the bad, the ugly. Because with any system, it's not going to satisfy everybody's needs. There's no way we're going to make everybody happy. But what were some of the things we need to be aware of? What were some of the concerns? Where would you do things differently? Would you go with a different system? You know, those kind of questions. So, right now, oh, I didn't know if he had a question or...
Well, he does that, I don't know.
I'm looking at the finger, and I'm not quite sure, because you won't look at me yet. Question?
Yes.
Joe?
As part of this process, are we going to have enough money? I assume you're going to be running some parallel systems, so we can test it, thoroughly vet it before it goes live. And is there enough money for server space? Do you have enough space to be able to do that? And do you have enough technical people that you're going to be able to bring onboard to be able to do that and do your day-to-day?
We're going to talk about the technical, but do you want to answer this?
Yes, we are, and our budget for this project include new systems, so this could run in parallel to the existing systems without impacting them. The additional impact to current staff that would support servers is going to be okay. And then we also have the new E R P analyst that was a part of this year's budget that would be coming on as part of this project. So, that would greatly help.
Okay, I appreciate it, because I've been to one of these. It was part of Glendale when they did their major conversion of PeopleSoft. And there's a lot of things that can go wrong as you bring the new system onboard. So, to me, what's most important is to run the parallel system to make sure you get as many bugs, you won't get them all out, but to get as many bugs as possible before you go live. So, thank you.
And as part of the next slide, we are going to talk about project management of that and how we're shoring this up, because you're right, a lot of things can go wrong with this. Right now, we hope to present, we're in contract negotiations, and in August, when you come back from your break, on August 18th, we hope to present to council two contracts, one for the software and one for the third-party project manager, which we spoke about in December and had put into our projections the cost to cover that. So, after that, likely we could begin implementation as early as October of this year, as we move forward. Yes, it is. Okay. No questions?
No, I think they're all right.
People, process, and technology. This is where we're going to kind of discuss, Vice Mayor Pozzillo, some of those things that we're putting into place to help make this successful. One of the things that we did in our reference checks, we reached out to those other organizations. It was Portland, and San Antonio, and San Diego, and Phoenix, a lot of organizations out there. There were some utilities that had used the system. And it was interesting how it came back. The system is powerful, they love the system, but there's three things they told us that you better have in order, in order to make this successful. And we heard it over and over and over again. And that was, the more you customize the program, the more problems you're going to have. San Diego, Phoenix, customized, customized, and now they're not able to do upgrades. And really, it's, you know, thinking about it out of the box as much as possible, fewer customizations, you're going to be happier in the long run. Now, this does mean it will change processes that we have. It will change some policies. We'll have to look at policies. We'll have to look at customer delivery and services and things like that. Some things could get quicker, some things a little slower. Things will change, because it'll be a new process for us. But as with any software program, the more you customize, it becomes more difficult to do those upgrades. So, we're going to watch that. That was their first warning. The second one was change management, change management, change management. I know that's only the second one, and I said it three times, but it was a big issue. And they said, you need to make sure that you're thinking about the employees and how this is going to work in your new system, and their processes. And so, it's really about, and communication with employees, and involvement. And so, we are, have been interviewing for a change management expert who will help, come in and help us with those processes. And we're also going to do some lean training with our employees, so all of them are talking the same language. We're talking about workflows, we're talking about processes. They go through that before they even start the implementation. So, we've got some expert guidance out there, because it's difficult when you think about, you've been doing this, this... you've been doing this this way for so long. And then when you think about how to prepare for processes that are gonna take you into the future, it's sometimes not easy to think about what those processes should look like. And so providing help with that, I think, and this might be something in your presentation, but I'm gonna jump ahead of you. They say, you know, you do the implementation, and however long that implementation takes, but it takes employees two years after that just to become comfortable with the new system. So you almost have to add two years past your implementation to become comfortable with that system. This is an organizational change. It's not just a computer change. It's how we do business on a daily basis, and that's why change management was such a big part of this. And the third and final area is leadership buy-in and support. And I believe, you know, in conversations with council, that we have that support to move in that direction. I know we have that from the city manager's office, and we have put into place an executive steering committee, which includes those people from that scoring committee who will oversee this project, and they're there to help allocate those resources, to make sure we have people in place. Those experts that we want working on have the time and the capability to put, you know, to put their resources to that, and their jobs being done, you know, and backfilled. So those were the three areas, they say, we'll sync an implementation quickly, and so we have listened and put in processes and people to help with that. The other that we're putting in place is that project manager, that outside project manager. Organizations don't make this change every day. I mean, think, it's been 20 years since we've made this change. We don't have the expertise internally to help us through this process. And we have worked with Berry Dunn, and we're in a contract, this one I can see. I'm looking at Larry to make sure, he's galling at me.
No, he's not. He's smiling.
He's smiling, okay, that's, I don't know. That's a good sign. And very excited, the lead individual from Berry Dunn has actually, he's really become enamored with Goodyear, and he has moved out to Goodyear, or out to the West Valley. He is going to, if you do approve the contract, he will be full-time with us over the implementation period. He has extensive background in this. We not only get his expertise, but we get the expertise of his entire company behind him. They generally will just do part-time, where they fly him out and then fly back. We have him for the full 40 hours every week. There's a city that way, who's also doing an implementation, and they're looking at hiring three consultants to come in on different, you know, schedules. So I think we're very fortunate to have someone who wants to help us succeed, and who I have a lot of confidence in their capabilities. So we'll talk more about that contract in August, but very fortunate. So I feel like we have set this up for success, but we also are walking in with our eyes wide open, that this is a large change, and there will be ups and there's gonna be downs, but as a team, we'll get through this, but excited about it. It's exciting.
It's a major change. I think in the past, it's been Band-Aids. And you're right, don't rewrite the programs, don't try to add things that the program wasn't created with. So, yeah, and so I think this is, I think it's going to be a little smoother than before. I don't think it's gonna be easy on employees, not, I'm glad it's their challenge and not mine.
But we're excited about it, yes.
We also want to point out that even though it's a Tier 1 ERP system, this isn't a cure-all. We will still have a need for what we're calling point solutions. And a point solution is really just a smaller piece of software that functions, you know, does one particular function really well. And so I'm gonna show you in a minute what our environment looks like today with all these point solutions, and there's quite a few. But one of our goals with this project is going to be to reduce the number of point solutions where we can, integrate those functions into the ERP. And you can imagine, every one of those point solutions is hardware, it's licensing, it's support, it's maintenance, it's administration costs. If we want it integrated, we have to build and support those integrations. So the fewer number of point solutions, the greater the efficiency and savings are going So I apologize, this is a bit of an eye chart here, but the purpose of this slide is to show you how complicated our environment is today. And this is a result of those 12 issues that we mentioned earlier. And as you can see, we pretty much have 14 silos of information. And information sharing between most of these apps either doesn't occur, or is manual or limited, which makes it really hard to do reporting, for example. And if you can imagine how many transactions across the city require a customer's name and address, right? You can just imagine how many that is. And you can imagine, and all these systems need to know that information, and today, we're probably typing it manually every time. And then from a customer service perspective, we're asking that customer to provide it every time. And one personal example that I've run into is, when you register for recreation programs, we usually offer a discount for Goodyear residents, but you have to prove you're a resident by providing your water bill, for example. Well, we have that information in another system in the city. Why do we need to ask them to provide that? And so that's just one simple, real-world example of how this could be better for our customers.
That's great.
It's gonna improve service.
Exactly.
It's nice to hear.
Now, we can't get rid of all of the point solutions. We know that. And we know going in, there's gonna be a need for some of them. What a point solution is, is typically a vendor specializes in that, and they're very deep in functionality around a particular industry or function, and they're gonna be really good at doing those things, whereas an ERP is a little more vanilla, if you will. It does a lot of things and maybe not as deep. And so there's gonna be employees who are very accustomed to a particular point solution, and they're gonna feel like maybe we're going backwards if we give up a couple of non-critical functions. But you have to understand the big picture in order to make that determination, because the quality of reporting and the ability to make decisions as an organization will likely outweigh those additional benefit, features that we would be giving up. And so this is something we're gonna have to decide on a case-by-case basis, which, with each of the departments and each of those point solutions.
But are you gonna try to minimize the number so that we can downsize? I mean, this is just-
Crazy.
This is nuts.
We are, yes.
And they're probably not the same vendor for any one thing, is it?
You'll notice that the hub and spoke model here, the hub is the department, and then the spokes are all the different applications. There are some that are used in multiple areas. For example, everybody except for FIRE uses Excel for time sheets today. So that's hard to represent that in this model. So there is some overlap, but for the most part, there's a lot of uniqueness in that map.
Are we gonna try to ask FIRE to use Excel?
Actually, with the new system, the time sheet and all of that will be in the new system, and Telestaff has been a point solution that they purchased, and it also helps with scheduling. So there's other benefits to Telestaff other than just the timekeeping, it's also the scheduling. So I would say at this point, Telestaff, we make sure that there's an interface with Telestaff on that particular one.
Sure. Well, it's gotta be more efficient if we're electronically reporting working hours rather than writing it with a pencil and a paper.
Yes, and then putting it in the system.
And then putting it, then someone else typing it in and putting it in, because if the employee puts it in, it's in. So.
Oh, that's great.
But that'll be nice. I'd like to, after the dust is settled, in a year or two or whenever, I'd like to know how many we were able to get rid of, or consolidate.
Okay.
Great.
It'd be interesting. How many do you think we have?
I knew you were gonna ask me that. I do not have that right in front of me, but-
Okay, that's all right.
I'm gonna say in the 30th range, yeah.
That's what I figured, 30 or 40. Wow.
There's a lot of duplication, because there's one left there.
Looking at budget and timeline estimates, back in December, we projected cost for this to be in the 3.8 to 4.5 million range with contingencies. And now that we're further along in the process, we have more information, we're estimating that to be at the higher end of that range plus contingencies. And as Winnet mentioned, we're still in negotiations on that contract, so we really don't have the specifics to share with you tonight, but we will have that when we come back in It's also important to note that there are a lot of components in that budget, and so I just wanted to touch on a few of those. Software licensing would be a big one. Staff backfill costs, is we're gonna have staff dedicated to this project. We'll need somebody to do their day-to-day jobs, and so that's a component of this budget. Implementation services, hardware, change management services, and the third-party project manager are all components of that. Some of these items have come in a little bit higher than we anticipated originally. Some have come in a little lower. Couple examples, the third-party project management came in a little lower than we expected, and hardware came in a little higher, for example. But no real surprises, and everything is pretty much as we expected. And then Winnet already stole this one, but, you know, during our reference checks, what we've really learned is that while the implementation done in phases can take two years, it does usually take a couple more years for employees to really feel comfortable with the system. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody understood the magnitude of this change that we're taking.
So nobody's allowed to leave after two years.
That's right.
Yeah, that came to mind. We trained them to a certain point where that they possibly can go out and find other employment, now that they're so experienced at a higher income, you know, at a higher rate, yeah. So that's always, I guess, the chance of it, but we'll take that chance.
Yes, we will.
Finally, next steps, we've mentioned these reference checks and peer review checks that we're doing, so we'll be wrapping those up. We're going to be finishing the contract negotiations with the vendor, and then we plan on coming back to see you when you return on the 18th for a contract approval for the ERP system and the third-party project management. And with that, we'll take any comments.
Comments for anybody? Questions?
Well, congratulations.
Joe?
Again, I've been through it, so two years, not unreasonable. And then it's time to learn after that. Best plans as you go through it? Something will kind of sidetrack you a little bit, get you back on, it's just the nature of the beast. So, no, you got a big job ahead of you, so I understand that.
Thank you. It's great to have that support and that knowledge.
We're growing up. Yes, Sherilyn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I commend you for being thorough, and I think what we have going for us in our city is that everybody is part of the team, and I think it would be a very minority that wouldn't be willing to put their shoulder to the wheel to make this happen as best they can, because it is huge. I'm not a techie person, but I have been a witness to this kind of a project, and it is huge and challenging, so get her.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
All right. First of all, hey, council, good questions on both of these. It really showed you all read your-
We read our homework.
You read the homework. So it's really nice to hear, and just great. So I don't think we have anything from the city manager at this point, so we have to start the regular meeting at 6 o'clock, okay? So I'm gonna adjourn this now. We'll have about 25 minutes, all right? Beating adjourned.
Wow.